I know, I heard, I'm really pleased. Anyway, it's perfect. Barb has dedicated most of her career to fitness, education. You've given us ten incredible years. Linda tells me we have some really nice candidates, applicants for your job, and they may be all that and then some, but they will never, ever compare to what you've done. So, on behalf of the City of Buellton, we have a lovely basket for you.
Do I just like sneak out?
Thank you.
Remember, we were best friends.
Yeah.
With the trailer?
We were best friends.
Mark, you should do it for the city in the background.
Get out of there, Mark.
I know. Just trying to jump in.
Would you have any words to say, any last parting? I know you're here till next Friday.
I am, I am. It has been an honor and the best job of my life so far, working with Kyle and starting something from absolute nothing that has now grown into something that people actually recognize almost 11 years later, but we knew it was going to be slow, and it was long, and I really appreciate the freedom and the support that we have gotten from the city staff and the city council. I just really appreciate the opportunity for me to be able to just have an idea and have my boss say, "Do it." And go, "Oh, okay," and have the support from you guys. So, it's really been a fabulous 10 years, and now I'm going on to run a senior center in Des Moines, Washington. So, I'll be Kyle up there. I keep saying, "I'm just going to be Kyle." So, they're very excited to have somebody do the things that I do. I hope they're excited. They say they are, but we'll see how much they really want it to do. They have no choice. So, I like it to be with my two beautiful grandchildren. That is the reason I am ultimately making that step. So, I want to be there for swim lessons and gymnastics and bad plays at school and all of that, so that's important, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I know Pam Nico wanted to be here too as well, because not only have you helped, I mean, you've been a huge part of our rec system, but you've also been a huge part of our senior center, and they feel the same way about you. So, thank you very much. All righty. Agenda item number nine, public hearings. Resolution number 19-10, a resolution of the city council of the City of Buellton, California, regarding the commitments and publishing. Thanks, Barb.
Oi. Sorry, you just dropped.
Bye, guys. Regarding the commitments and publishing the report required by Central Coast Water Authority, resolution numbers 92-02 and 92-11. Ms. Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Member City Council. So, this is our annual water supply type report. It's our requirement as part of one of the members of CCWA. It's part of our water supply agreement. We bring this annually, and we go over the water supply report that we have for the past fiscal year. Attachment, actually, it's Exhibit A to the resolution, is our water supply report for 2019, and that has also been posted online and posted at the library as well for the public to be able to view. There are no significant changes to the water supply report from the past fiscal year. We did add a section this year outlining the information that we're going over with the San Ynez River Water Conservation District with the groundwater supply and the GSA. So, that information has been updated in the actual report as well. And once we move forward with that, we'll have new information as far as our groundwater supply. At this point, there hasn't been significant changes over the past year. Our water supplies are still relatively steady. Last year in particular, there had only been one release from Lake Atuma to feed into the river. That went over for about a month and a half, but compared to prior years where we'd had two or three releases. So, that was significant change, that our water supply has been a little bit more consistent due to the rains that we've had. Well, we always say and continue to promote still water conservation through the city, even though we do have ample water supply, because we want to continue and make sure that our water supply is lasting for the duration of the time. So, we do want to continue to stress, you know, to residents to keep, you know, conserving your water, making sure you're watering in the evenings, not during the daytime. We don't have the drought ordinance requirement through the state that's mandating that, but we still want to make sure that people aren't watering excessively.
Absolutely.
So, with that, if you have any questions regarding the report, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions before I open it to the public? No questions? This is our audience's opportunity to speak up on our Central Coast Water issue. Seeing nothing, I will bring it back to council. I just wanted to say I really appreciate the eight pages for the public. I mean, it was, I thought it was very informative of where our water comes from and how much water we have, and that's just going to be posted at the library? It's not going out?
No, and it's, we just have a hard copy at the library. We'll have a hard copy made available at City Hall also, and then it's available online.
Okay, perfect. All righty. Well, gentlemen?
I'll move to approve resolution number 19-10 as written. Second.
All righty. Linda?
Right, Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andreasek.
Aye.
And Mayor Sear.
Thank you very much. All righty. Councilmember comments slash items. Councilmember Sanchez, do you have any comments or items you want brought back to council?
I just wanted to say I went to Shelby Sims', visit San Ynez presentation today, and he had a very nice presentation and was doing a good job. I think our money's well spent with him, and it was nice to go. And I'm working, I've been working on raising the flags and putting them down at night, and I have a crew of nine so far, counting my grandchildren, because I made them go up there and help me. So, we just, they're not around to take them down, but sometimes in the morning. It takes two people because they're 12 feet long. But if anybody's interested or board or once, until we can get the flags lit. I was a little inspired with the D-Day, waking up at 3:00 in the morning, watching the D-Day celebration, and I thought the least I could do is put up a flag. So, I've been working, Ed's come and helped me, and we've got Nina, Nini and Rick have offered a storage place so we can put the flags in there, so everyone knows where to go and get them, and I've got, talked to the city staff so they know where to get them if they need them for any reason, that they'll be, they're in a safe spot at night, and they're, they'll be put up and taken down until
We can light them.
Until we can get some lighting. We'll try to, I mean, as we can. If we can't, then we'll just do them when we can.
They look beautiful.
It's nice to have them up, I think.
They look beautiful, yeah.
And thank Ed for coming up, and we even got there on time.
Vice Mayor, any comments slash items?
I do have one comment. I wanted to thank Kyle Abello and our Recreation Department. He went out of his way. About two months ago, I suggested that, at our Central Coast Water Authority monthly meeting, that we try to extend an opportunity for any of the board members that would like to see the plant operation. It's a pump station for the state water project for the Central Coast off where our money goes. It's a huge, huge facility, and Kyle got us there and back with, right on time, I think he met the time, but we, everyone, we had council members from Santa Barbara hours.
Carpinteria.
Carpenteria.
Wow.
And Guadalupe, and we had Guadalupe. So, it was a worthwhile adventure, and it was, pardon me?
Where was the tour?
To Palomino Pass, Pastor Robles, for looking at the state water project, and it was, it was, it was a full day. I think we were at 9:00, Linda orchestrated it, and Kyle delivered. Everyone was happy with it, so I thank Kyle and CCWA for being open to it. They were happy, the fact they said they think they'll want to try to do that on an annual basis. Because I had done it about 20 years ago when it first went online, and I thought it was worth everyone getting to see it. And it's not something you can just go into. It's very highly guarded because it's our water system for Central California. So, that's, that was a great accomplishment. I'm glad it all came together, and happy to report.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Mercado?
I have nothing right now.
No comments slash items? Councilmember King?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I just had, well, first of all, I'd like to thank John and Ed. The flags look beautiful, and we need to make lighting the flags a priority with the maintenance budget at the beginning of our fiscal year, which is two weeks away, so that's, that's important. I'd also like to bring back an agenda item. When we were discussing the budget, I thought, and I, Mark went back and looked for me, but I thought we had put money into the arts and culture when we were talking about the visioning plan, and everybody said that we haven't started with arts and culture, and I wanted to set aside $50,000 each fiscal year, the next two fiscal years, to have it on hand, so that when we got this committee going, that Councilmember Sanchez agreed to be on with me and whoever, that if any projects came up, that the funds would be available, not necessarily that we would spend the funds, but that this arts and culture, we would get the ball rolling on that. And I thought I had made the motion, and I don't know what I was thinking because it's not on any of the tapes. So, I'd like to have that brought back for discussion, if that's okay with you guys? Terrific. Thank you very, very much. And again, thank you. The flags look really nice. Okay, moving on, written communications. Do we have any?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Committee reports. Do we have any kind?
No committees.
Not for you?
Not for me.
No? No, I know you filled in for me, and I truly appreciate it.
I enjoyed it, thank you. Santa Barbara County Association of Governments North County Transportation Committee, the name tags are like that. They met, they work on projects specific to our community, so it's worth attending, and we have the usual five people in the audience, but it's a start. But I, I think everything was on schedule, and we, we're in phase, is it Phase 3? I think it's Phase 3 or Step 3, where it's going to be concerning. You might have seen they've done some, some construction work on 246 right outside of Min, not Minlo, La Lata and 246. It looks, they're, I don't think they're quite finished yet, but it's a nice improvement. It's a slowing, it's a calming development, I think is the best way to put it. I just hope nobody hits it, because it's just concrete on top of asphalt.
There's a lot of rock there.
But they will have a ribbon cutting out there.
Maybe so.
Okay.
And then, Santa Barbara North County, North CAG meeting yesterday?
Yes.
Oh, that was it?
That was it.
Thank you.
For transportation.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to business items. Agenda item number 10, the Library Management Services Agreement between the City of Galida and the City of Buellton. Mr. Bierzinski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The agreement is before you to transfer to the Galida libraries effective July 1st. The agreement includes funding details as well as agreed-upon maintenance responsibilities. And if you've been, I know the mayor hasn't been here, but they've been busy coding books, and they will be done this week.
Excellent.
On all the books in the library, so that is a good thing. The county, the city has allocated the funds and the budget for operation of the library per the agreement and per the budget that we've been given to the council, and there still is a possibility of additional $20,000 from the county. They discussed it at their last board meeting. The Library Advisory Committee meeting is going to discuss it next week, so we may get an additional reduction of $20,000 from the county on that. So, we're recommending that the city council approve the agreement with the City of Galida for library services and authorize the city manager to execute the contract, and the librarian for Galida, Allison Gray, is in the audience if there are any particular questions.
Thank you. First of all, before going to the public, are there any questions for Mark or for Allison? Okay. I don't have any speaker slips. Does anybody in the audience want to speak on this item, our library? Allison, I truly appreciate you coming up. I am very excited that we're going to be under your umbrella, and it's a new venture for you and a new venture for us, and so far, I just really appreciate all the work you put into fitting us in with you. So, thank you. No other questions? Bring it back to council for a motion?
For approval of the agreement with the City of Galida for library services. Second.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
No, go ahead.
All righty. Linda?
Moving right on.
Okay, Vice Mayor Andreasek.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
And Mayor Sear.
Aye. Thank you very much, and thank you. We're looking forward to it. Agenda item number 11, resolution number 19-14, a resolution of the city council of the City of Buellton, California, regarding red curb addition and removal on McMurray Road. Ms. Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Members City Council. So, at your April 25th meeting, council discussed various options regarding red curbing along McMurray Road. On the north McMurray Road portion, it was recommended that we red curb the southern portion, the east side of McMurray Road at Valley Vineyard Circles, so at the north Valley Vineyard and then south Valley Vineyard. And that would create new red curbing on the south Valley Vineyard Circle intersection, and for the north Valley Vineyard Circle, the recommendation was to actually slide, transition the existing red curb that's utilized for the bus stop, and slide it all the way up to that north end, so that we're not creating new red curbing space, we're just utilizing what's existing there. So, we're shifting that existing red curb about 140 feet north. I did speak with SYVT Transit, so they are aware of this slight relocation for the bus shelter, and they're okay with that. And then, for the south side of McMurray Road, there is an existing red curb south of the Buellton Town Center driveway, and the recommendation out of that discussion was to remove most of the red curb. We'll retain portion of the red curb for the fire hydrant that's at the south end, but we would remove the rest of that red curbing on the east side, south of that driveway, in order to have additional parking space, on-street parking spaces for the adjacent businesses. So, with that, we've provided resolution 19-14, and Exhibit A has the aerial that reflects all these changes to the red curbing. And with that, if council approves this resolution, we will have this taken care of within the next couple of weeks by staff. We will coordinate with, with like ranch hands to move the physical bus shelter itself.
Terrific. All righty. Before I go to public comment, and I do have speaker slips, do you have any questions for Rose? I know we've gone over this once before.
I had a question on the fire hydrant red curbing. Was it, what the requirement was at, and if that could be reduced, and it just seemed like it was like
Um, per the CBC, California Vehicle Code, it's 15 feet on each side.
Is that all it is? Maybe it just looked bigger to me when I saw it, but that's, that's like, whatever it's supposed to be, I didn't see. It just seemed like, across from the theater, it just seemed like that red curb was, it's only 30 feet of parking.
Well, it's, it, there's a driveway apron south of it, immediate south of it, so we're we're
The one on, the one across from the movie theater. It's about in the middle, I thought.
That's north McMurray.
North McMurray. And the other one, yeah, yeah, well, thank you for, I think that one's going to be great. I appreciate that, that I was over there yesterday. Okay, I think that's going to be quite a nice improvement. I was just wondering about on the north side, the distance between the, how much curb do we have to have for a fire hydrant? And could it be less than, on both sides?
Vehicle code says 15 feet both sides.
Okay. It looked, it looked bigger than that.
Unless you want to fire hose through your Porsche.
Yeah.
They love to do that.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, then I am opening it to the public. I do have two slips right now. If anybody else wants to speak, this is your opportunity to fill out a speaker slip. Our first one is Sandy Lincoln.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for bringing the resolution forward, and I appreciate your hard work on that. I do think, though, that there might be just a slight miss from the discussion on April 25th, and I bring your attention to this photo here in your package. I understood that there was going to be red curb, or the visualization or whatever, I don't know what the term is. I thought that there was going to be red curb as you're exiting the south Valley Vineyard on the right. So, I know that you guys are putting in, or there's a resolution to put in, the red curb to the left, like behind H&R Block building, but the one that's on the right. I think that that one was either missed, or, I can show you a picture that I took this evening. There's currently a truck parked there now, and then there's also a truck, I don't know who wants to see this picture, but the concern I have is that there is a truck that's parked adjacent to the H&R Block building that's basically blocking the stop sign. It's, it's on Valley Vineyard, okay? I don't know why
The truck is parked on Valley Vineyard?
Yeah, the truck is
Okay, that's
If you want to pass it around, that's fine.
That's, that doesn't, wouldn't have anything to do with tonight's deal, but it's a new, a new
Well, the concern I have, the concern I have is that that part, that truck is parked there, and there usually is a truck parked there, and then there's that, the need for the red curb in order to exit where that truck is, to turn north on McMurray. If you don't have a red curb there, that truck that's in that other picture is blocking your view. So, I tried it tonight as I was coming here, and there's a truck currently parked there that's blocking the view that you can't see. So, just a thought. And then, I didn't know if I should put in a separate sheet to talk about another thing first that wasn't on the agenda. So, if I may, 30 seconds or whatever. There's a large train tractor carrying item that's on Second Street in front of one of the homes, just south of, or just east of Hanada. You know. Okay. Is that going to be removed?
The city has really been worried on that one.
It's allowed in the street during construction, and they have the appropriate permits, and it will be removed by July.
Thank you. Yeah, it's really hard, there's a lot of kids and stuff. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that one, that one, yeah. Thank you, Sandy.
Oh, I don't know. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're returning your phone. Rose Dieters? Hello again.
Hello. My name's Rose Dieters. I do reside at Vineyard Village, and I just wanted to thank you for bringing this issue forward and discussing it. I wanted to share a situation that I had the other evening. I came home from work. The street was pretty good as far as McMurray Road, and by the time I got home, changed, came out, the entire street of McMurray had probably eight semi trucks in a row all the way down McMurray. You couldn't see anywhere. You couldn't see through them approaching the intersection, and this is at the north entrance. So, I couldn't look to the right, I couldn't look to the left. By the time I got there, I was in the street, looking around the trucks, and I had cars coming at me, so I was kind of panicked in a freaked-out situation, but there's families that reside there, and I don't want anybody to go into that unsafe situation. So, I just wanted to share that and take that into consideration. I really appreciate it. I know the truckers need to have a place to park. Hopefully, we can get it, you know, some other parking for them and come to a safe resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Mr. Baker.
Well, Mr. Baker's my dad.
Michael, step on up.
Michael, there you go. It's nice to be able to speak as a resident rather than a representative of the place in Coast Guard, so first of all, thank you for bringing this forward. Very serious situation there. I mean, wife and I pull out of there quite often, and it's obstructive view quite often and not safe. Certainly, I worry about that even more so when we get to the winter months, when it's darker earlier and lighter later in the day. So, what I would want to state, though, is one thing that was interesting to me is I walk around that perimeter quite a bit, and maybe it's not hooked up, maybe this is the reason why, but there is a fire hydrant that is about the halfway point on that road, and there's no red painting or any, but, and there's almost always a truck parked right in front of it, big semi.
Doesn't have to be red.
Doesn't have to, I thought, I thought you couldn't park within
You can't park, but it doesn't have to be painted red.
Okay, but they, okay. So, it doesn't have to be red, but there's
They shouldn't be there.
They should not be there, okay. I wasn't sure, but there's almost
Call the sheriff.
Okay, there's almost always
There can be painted red anyways.
Okay. Okay, I wasn't sure, maybe it wasn't hooked up, and that's why it wasn't, but it doesn't have to be painted red. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, and we know about that hydrant, and we're going to be painting the red right through it anyway, right?
No, it's not part of the resolution, and as
It's not part of the area in here?
I don't think so. I think it's further south than where the bus shelter is.
Okay.
And then, that's also the area that's proposed driveway for the hotel, so they're going to be relocating that.
Okay, so the trucks should know not to park there anyway. We don't need to paint it red?
We don't need to paint it red for it to be enforced.
It's illegal to park there, whether it's red or not.
All right, well, that I understand, but you know, some of us need that big red flag.
Madam Mayor, that hydrant is actually, I believe, part of the part that I added, you know, that I had asked to look at that additional
Right.
area. I believe that if you were able to amend the resolution to include that area, that it would be red up into that fire hydrant and beyond it. Yeah.
Let me explain the whole
Yeah.
The bus stop relocation is going to take away any semis parked in there?
Right there, where it is right now.
No, I'm talking about the south exit of Valley Vineyard, the one in my picture.
Know where the stop sign is?
Yes. Not the north one across from the movie theater. I'm talking about the south one by H&R Block. So, if you were to amend the resolution to include that section, that wasn't
If you're going to have discussions, you probably should
Right, you're welcome to stand up.
I apologize.
We're talking about a different street, though. We're talking about Vineyard Drive, right? Or are we talking about McMurray still?
McMurray still.
Okay.
Is there a chance that semis could come in?
Sandy, why don't you just stand up?
And park all?
And get in trouble with
Keep this all, yeah, keep all this
Could trucks come in and park all in that loop without being parked on McMurray? Could they just, could, is it possible for trucks to just fill your whole cul-de-sac with trucks? Is it legal to park there?
It's
Apparently, it is in front of the stop sign, but is there any curb that can be parked that part?
There's no red curbs there. I think while there's no hotel there, like, certainly an option.
Well, there's no red curb in front of the stop sign that you're, that you're addressing. Is that, do you think there should be red curb there?
So, I think we're kind of confused on the part that I'm speaking of. So, I don't really, unless I have a marker, I could certainly show you very easily, but the part that I'm talking about is
On McMurray Road?
It's McMurray Road. It's across from Motel 6, okay, if that helps? It's the exit from the, I don't know what the name of that
The back of H&R Block?
Yes.
That's, it's addressed in this.
Okay. So, I don't believe it is. So, really quickly
Right, the truck was there, but she wants the red there.
Okay. This is McMurray. This is Vineyard Valley Circle or whatever. You're talking about moving this bus stop, which is great, making this part a red curb, okay? And then, you're talking about adding a red curb here, this little cutout. What I'm asking is if you would consider looking at this area to be the red curb as well, which was part of the discussion we had on April 25th, because there's a fire hydrant that's about right there. So, if you were to include these sightlines like you did here, the 50 feet, then I think you would more than cover the hydrant, even though it doesn't have to be red. You would cover it by making it red, so that there isn't a truck that's parked there like right now, blocking the view coming out here.
Why would you do that?
Why would I, why would I want to make this red?
Yeah, if you're making a right-hand turn, there's no reason to not.
There's no incoming traffic from that direction.
But traffic's, traffic's coming from your left, and the vehicle code specifically says.
But it's also coming this way, okay? It's coming this way, and you want to make sure that you can see anything that's coming on the road. You can't, if there's a truck parked here, you can't see anything that's happening on that section of the road.
Well, but once you've established your right-of-way in the northbound lane, you have the right-of-way. If you were making a right-hand turn from that stop sign, once you have taken possession of that lane, and the vehicle code says you get the right-of-way lane by lane, so you have established yourself, after you make a complete stop, and now we're putting a red curb to the south, so there won't be a truck parked there, so there's no sightline distraction south of you.
Okay.
So once you have made the right-hand turn to go north on McMurray, you have the right-of-way.
Okay, I totally get that.
So for us to take parking away from vehicles there would be imprudent.
Well, I don't believe that there's space for a semi to park in between where I'm talking about and the hydrant anyway.
Well, but you could, you could put a car in there. I mean, for us to red curb it arbitrarily doesn't make any sense.
Okay, I get, I totally get you. Thank you. Yeah, I get it. It's just, it's really nice to be able to see the entire road as you're, you know, you're making a turn, but you're right, it would be my right-of-way if I'm clear coming out, so.
You ever been to Santa Monica?
No, that's why I moved to Buellton, so that I could not have to do this anymore. I just moved from Moore Park, and I'm already loving Buellton so much more.
Thank you.
What is, what is the speed limit there?
35.
35.
Is that what it's supposed to be?
100.
Yeah, they're not doing 35, it's supposed to 35.
But see, if we red curb it south of where you're talking about, and the trucks don't park there, nor vehicles park there anymore, then you shouldn't really have an issue, no? Where you had the truck parked was on that exit, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. But if you're turning left, it's an issue.
Yeah, so if this guy.
If you're turning left out there.
It does.
Right, the same thing applies. If you pulled out into that traffic lane, and then you saw cars coming south, after you establish yourself in that traffic lane, vehicles going northbound have to yield the right-of-way to you, because you yield lane by lane when crossing a highway. So if there is a truck even parked to the north of that exit, once you have pulled out into that lane, the vehicles going northbound have to yield the right-of-way. They can't just drive into the side of your car, because they want to. Once you have pulled out there, if you see a traffic coming southbound, if you have to wait for that traffic, once you have established yourself in that traffic lane, you have the right-of-way.
Sandy, he's retired CHP. It's almost like getting pulled over sometimes.
Awesome, so, I appreciate it. Yeah, keep up the good work, thank you.
My question is, if the trucks, granted, if there's a fire hydrant, they, the 15 feet in each direction is law, whether it's painted red or not. Obviously, we have some truck drivers parking on that road who are not aware of that, and instead of bothering our sheriff's department, our local police department, perhaps while we're painting these red, that it might not hurt to paint 15 feet in each direction from the fire hydrant.
So you're saying just throw some extra paint out?
I'd like not to have a red curb there unnecessarily, because it's just, if somebody fights it a little bit and gets a little closer, it's not anybody that's going to be in the way of the people pulling out. It'll just add a little bit more.
I'm just talking about safety sake with the fire hydrant.
That's.
It's the same.
But the more, the more red paint there, and then when the.
Whether you're parked in the red or you're parked within 15 feet, I mean, they are two separate violations, however, you're still in violation.
Right, it's just easier for a driver to see the red line and know that that's a no-no. But, okay, I'm, I just want to move forward on this. If it doesn't work and we need to readjust it, then we'll readjust it. But I'm closing public comment on this, coming back to the council regarding our red curb addition and removal.
I have one comment.
Certainly.
I think it's a good compromise, because I support tractors by a lot during the week, and I'm in there at least three or four times a week, and it's usually in the late afternoon, evening, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, and these compromises will make a good choice. It'll help, because when you do come out and you're traveling, or at least for me, because I live back over in Thumbelina, I have to make the left-hand turn, have to get to the light, and come back around. So I've done it numerous times, so I think these compromises will help everybody, and I hope everybody appreciates the seriousness, the thought process that we've gone through this.
So is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Henda.
Okay. Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Drusick.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye, thank you. Agenda item number 12, consideration of a proposition 68 grant application for the Santianas Valley Community Aquatics Park Complex, conceptual approval of joint use/lease agreement with the Santianas Valley Union High School District and the Santianas Valley Community Aquatics Foundation, and allocation of Proposition 68 per capita program funds. Mr. Abello, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. I think I may have a record for longest title of an item, but there are a lot of, a lot of ideas that really surround this, this project and an opportunity to tap into a significant amount of state grant funds. As, as all of you are aware, there is no public pool in the Santianas Valley. The entire Santianas Valley, according to research that the Aquatics Foundation has done, is actually the least served community in the whole county, as far as amount of pool hours for residents. For our own Buellton rec summer day camp, we traveled to the Paul Nelson Pool in Santa Maria and the Lumpook Aquatic Center for many of our field trips, because there's very limited time available, and just a few weeks during the summer that we're able to do that. So in order to address this, this shortcoming, as well as the very old existing pool at the high school, which is, as I said, has been open for very limited time during the summer, the Santianas Valley Community Aquatics Foundation was formed in 2015 specifically to raise and provide the necessary funds for design, development, installation, and continued operation of two pools, a competition pool and a recreation therapeutic pool, including ancillary facilities on the site of the high school. The district will allow the Community Aquatics Park Complex, which we're just calling "The Project," to be open seven days a week, even when schools in session. Similar to the, our rec center, it is located on the corner of the high school campus, which would allow that, that type of arrangement. This type of complex would not only provide access for youth camps and swimming lessons, but collaborative programs, senior center, water aerobics, adult exercise, even special events. It will be open year-round for all ages, and programming can include any number of things, but the, the foundation has specifically looking, been looking at aquatherapy, master swim, competitive swim, water polo, dive, Special Olympics, water safety and lifeguard training, and of course, general recreation. So you can see a little bit on your attachment too, on the funding to date that the foundation has done. Last year, in June of 2018, California voters approved Proposition 68, Parks, Environment, and Water Bond, authorizing $4 billion in general obligation bonds. And while there are many programs under this Prop 68, there are two that really pertain to us tonight. First of those is the statewide park development program, and then the second is the per capita program. So the first program, that statewide park development program, has multiple rounds of funding, and actually, the, the great majority of that $4 billion in bond funds is earmarked for this program. It's a competitive grant program through the state, and the foundation is asking and requesting the city be the lead applicant for this grant. The high school as an entity is not eligible for this grant, because school districts have other propositions where they get grant bond funds to repair buildings and such. So local cities are eligible. The foundation has, with that request, also offered to provide the services of professional grant writer to complete both the statewide park development grant, as well as a per capita program grant that the city is eligible for. The foundation will continue 100% of their fundraising efforts, again, to get to the finish line, but this significant chunk that they're seeking is 6.3 million would really be the bulk of the remaining funds needed to make this a reality. In addition to design and construction costs, those grant funds are also able to be used to purchase construction-related insurance, in addition to the existing policy, if needed. In order to qualify for those funds, this, this grant does require either the city to be a property owner, or to enter into a joint use/lease agreement. As I don't think that the city is interested in buying a high school, I don't think the high school is interested in selling that, the, the option presented to you is to enter into a joint use/lease agreement for that tune. Upon completion, the district, again, as they are now, would be responsible for all the maintenance costs, all the water, utilities, everything for that facility. The city would be responsible for programming and scheduling, much like our current relationship with the Buellton District to operate that, that facility at the rec center. If the council agrees in concept, they may direct staff to return with a draft agreement that, for approval, that would formalize these roles and responsibilities of each entity in detail, the insurance and indemnification requirements. This final grant notice from the state requires that the operation of the site would be for 30 years, and that would be the proposed term of that joint use and lease agreement. Our city's insurer, California JPIA, has indicated there are many examples of similar agreements among member cities throughout the state, and if the council desires to move forward, both JPIA and the city attorney, of course, would review a draft before it's brought back to you for approval. The other program under Proposition 68 is the per capita program, and that one is based on population. Being that Buellton is a small population, we would be most likely qualified for the minimum grant amount, which is $200,000. Those funds have to be for either acquisition of parkland or new construction. Currently, the city does not have any projects that fit those eligibility requirements, but this, this aquatics project does fulfill that. So the foundation is also asking that the city consider allocating some or all of the Proposition 68 per capita funds to the project as well. The foundation is also going to be requesting those funds from the city of Solvang and the county of Santa Barbara. The, and the per capita program monies do require a city matching grant, and I'll go over that in our fiscal impact. But overall, staff recommends that the city council consider this rare opportunity to gain what amounts to a municipal pool without bearing the ongoing maintenance costs of that facility. This would require the city acting as a lead in the Proposition 68 grant process, and considering allocating the proposition per capita grant funds to the project. For fiscal impact, the foundation would be providing a professional grant writer to do both of our applications, both the per capita program and the competitive grant, so it would not take any staff time. The competitive grant, there is no matchment, matching amount required, but for the per capita program, there is a 20% matching amount from city funds. The $200,000 that we're eligible for, for per capita funds from the state, the matching amount would be $40,000 from the city. Again, there's no other project that we have currently, so if, if we did not apply for this, this per capita program, then we would, we would not get any funds for anything. The recommendation, again, comes in three parts, and they, they don't have to be all together. The first two are connected. The city council is asked to consider acting as the lead in the Proposition 68 statewide park development program grant application for the aquatics complex, and as part of that, letter B, conceptually approving of a joint use, joint use/lease agreement with the Santianas Valley Union High School District and the Santianas Valley Community Aquatics Foundation, and direct staff to bring a draft agreement back to council for approval. The third part of the request is considering allocating Buellton's Proposition 68 per capita funds, those $200,000 that we are eligible for, towards this project. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Kyle?
I do. I know, I have seen the renderings of this project.
Yes.
Basically, in the summer, because I know the water polo boys are in the pool right now, so that's probably why we don't, probably why we don't get a bunch of use or take enough time before we. Are they, have you talked to the school? Are they proposing that we use the warm-up pool, like, as a public pool?
There are two pools, and in fact, there, there's been a lot of discussion between the foundation and the school district. The superintendent is here tonight, and he might speak more to that. But the foundation and the school district had to create a memorandum of understanding, even to begin the process of looking for raising private funds to put a, a new pool complex on the, the school property. So one pool is proposed to be all-deep, and that would be water polo, diving, swim team. The other pool, which is actually as large as the existing pool, 25-yard pool, would be warmer water, and it would be recreation and therapeutic. The, the benefit of having two pools, one that you can have them at different temperatures, but also that, so that you can have more than one activity scheduled, and even the size of, of the large pool, you could have more than one team even practicing, because that's the 50-meter giant one.
Right, I've been to several schools that have those, and the massive.
Yeah.
Okay, answered my question.
Good.
One thing I did want to add, I neglected to mention, the, there are other grant programs through this Proposition 68. If the city council does become the lead applicant for this project, that doesn't preclude eligibility for any of the other ones. There's one, I think, for trail system that might be applicable for the river trail, and so this would not affect eligibility for that at all. So that's just something I wanted to make sure.
And that was my question. I'm really glad you answered it for me, thank you. Our trails are really important to us, and if there is any way we can get grant funding for that, I'd hate to miss the vote, as important as this is. So, thank you. Any other?
The one with the, what's the, when does this grant have to be?
Well, the grant deadline is August 5th.
August 5th.
So if, again, if the council conceptually approves of, of this idea of the joint use/lease agreement, then we would get to work with the city attorney, with the school district's legal counsel, and make sure that we come up with a draft agreement that protects all parties, and then bring that back to you, hopefully before August 5th.
Okay.
I do have one more question. Sure. You may not know the answer to this, Kyle, but what happened to our Olympic grant?
Actually, I'll let Lisa Palmer, the foundation president, refer to that, because they, the foundation did get a grant from the LA 84.
Oh, because that was the government, so.
Yeah, so she, I think she can, she can speak to that.
We've got a speaker slip right here. Let me get the.
There you go then. Okay, that'll answer.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
No, ma'am.
John, any other questions?
Well, presented. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Then I'm going to open it up to the public. We're going to start with Lisa. Please step on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for allowing us to bring this before you this evening. We're very appreciative. Mr. King, to answer your question first, we did get, we did obtain a grant from LA 84 Foundation, and it was fairly substantial for them for a non-programming grant. It was dedicated for studies and planning, and we've actually expended those over the last year in order to move us through the planning permitting process. So we are hopeful, and based on our performance on that grant, that we will be able to go back to them for some programming money, once the facility is operational, or we're, or we're approved and into construction and looking toward programming. I just want to take a minute of your time tonight to say thank you for considering this. You know, I was reflecting on Barbara's comments this evening on starting from nothing and coming to where you are, you know, parks and rec service area over the last decade, and it really has laid the foundation for what we're asking you to do today, and that is the model you have between the Buellton Union School District and the city to provide the health and wellness and recreation activities that you, you do today. And doing this joint use, this joint use and lease agreement with the high school district and the foundation for the purposes of moving forward with the grant, again. and the foundation for the purposes of moving forward with the grant, again, we would be entertaining this arrangement if we're successful with, if we are awarded the 6.3 million that we have this one-time opportunity for our valley, frankly, to obtain. So I just wanted to thank you for that, and also recognize Kyle for his leadership and expertise in helping us come up with a very collaborative approach, valley-wide approach that's leveraging the talent and organizations we already have here in the valley to hopefully realize something that's going to benefit all of our residents. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
And I'll be here for questions if you have.
Terrific. Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Corey. Step on up.
Well, good evening to all of you. Thank you for the opportunity to be on this side. We had a meeting earlier this week and another one on the 25th, where we will be having a similar conversation about the joint use and all of that. I do want to thank you for even considering this. There is a tremendous opportunity to really do some amazing things for our valley. This would not be just a high school pool. It would certainly serve that purpose, and we are in need of some upgrades, but the opportunity to take what is already a significant center of activity for the valley, and really a community center, the largest community center in the valley for not just athletics, but also arts and other programming, and to be able to add this to it, I think would be a tremendous boost for our community. And so the Prop 68 funding would really provide a significant catalyst to move this project forward and take us where I think we can be in really a tremendous place. So a joint use community facility and also a high school pool all at the same time, it's really an exciting opportunity. So any questions from a high school district perspective, some things that you would like to know?
I just, I just had a question. Is Solvang able to also enter into this agreement?
They are. I think the foundation really approached Buellton because of our track record of a successful model, that we have the experience with a joint use, a city and a school district. As an attorney might be able to appreciate, the more entities that you get started adding to a joint use agreement, it just becomes a little more unwieldy. As part of the joint use agreement, as we do with our current one, we would have a joint use committee, and that committee would be advising on programming options, and that committee would include all of the major partners and user groups, such as City of Solvang, the YMCA, you know, Boys and Girls Club, so that way they would, we would be gathering all their input and putting together a schedule of programs. So. But I know the foundation is going to be asking for their per capita funds.
It's just unfortunate the CIF girls, water polo champions, didn't get to swim in that pool. They're all graduated.
Yes.
That's our future.
There are a lot of CIF championships waiting. And so what's being referred to there is, we do not have, obviously, enough deep-end space to host CIF events, and so that has been lamented many times by lots of folks. Like I said, the size of this pool as well would have lost to actually host, and do a couple of different matches and other activities and practices and events simultaneously that should really be.
Something our valley truly needs.
It would really be something. So anyway, so if this is successful this evening, we'll have a similar conversation on the 25th, and then we will work very rapidly with our council and your council as well to move this forward.
For August, yeah.
For August 5th. We will make that, make that happen if we're successful on both ends with the agreement to a concept. So, thank you very much for attending.
Thanks, Scott. Okay. Don't have any other speaker slips? Any last-minute people? No? Closing it down, bringing it back to council? Ideas, gentlemen? I, you know, the state's come up with this 254,942,000 statewide, very competitive. Our valley's asking for 6.3 million of that, and they, high school can't do it. We have an amazing recreation department. If I remember, we have a former council member, Victoria Pointer, who, along with many members of our community, desperately wanted a swimming pool, which I know council member King and I were not in favor of due to insurance liabilities. This would be a wonderful opportunity to have something in the valley where people can go swimming. It looks, I mean, there would be a per capita expense to the city, but other than that, it sure would be nice, in my mind, to spearhead, to help spearhead something like this. Any other thoughts or suggestions?
I think it's worth it.
And I just think that the idea of Buellton being the lead party in this, that gives us a vested interest, and I like the fact that we have someone who, with Kyle's ability and talent, gives us a leg up. The foundation, Lisa's a tremendous person who can get things done, and when the time comes for, they have a joint use committee, I would volunteer for that, to make sure that Buellton's.
Terrific.
Voice is heard, and I like the fact, because I'm currently on the committee to work with the Buellton School District, so it's a great situation.
Your joint use committee.
And I just think it's something great for the valley. My two sisters play water polo and traveled a lot. My two children have learned how to swim in the pool, so it's a great asset for the valley.
And I was at the, when did they come to the mission for the blessing, the forms? Was that two years ago? Few years ago? Oh my gosh, that was such an incredible, they were showing pictures of it, because everything was in pieces, and it's one of the largest, I mean, it's state-of-the-art, it's a state-of-the-art pool. Yeah. So, and of course, if anybody in the valley is going to help head this thing up, not just solely, but with the San Ones Community Aquatic Foundation and the high school, it should be Buellton.
Right.
Any other comments or questions?
You mentioned three, three things. One was Proposition 68, and one was the 200 for the per capita, and now it was the third.
Well, the third, A and B go together, because if the, if the city is the lead in that, in the competitive grant, part of that is the joint use lease agreement. So that's one and two, and then the third part is the per capita program, which is, it's another program of Proposition 68. So it's, I know it's confusing, there's all kinds of these programs, but more money.
And that's what they're going to take to Solvang and to the county, this per capita, to get community involvement, to get everybody to invest in it.
So do we need a motion?
We do.
To consider.
Just a consensus for this? Because we're not, we're not even really.
It's a consensus, right?
It's a consensus.
It's a.
You know, there is a budget aspect to this, so why don't we just do a motion? You can just move staff's recommendation. That'll take all three in one, and then we'll have, we'll call, and we'll be good to go.
I'll make the motion.
Terrific. I will second it. I will second that.
Don't have to read it.
Greg did a good job.
Okay. Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Drusick.
Aye.
Yay! Okay. You've got some work to do by August 5th.
Listen, I can't thank you enough. Honestly, we can't think of a better partner than the city of Buellton. Thank you very much, and we'll be working hard on this. I anticipate a similar outcome on the 25th, and we'll be moving. So thank you.
Scott, let's get that pool in.
Let's get it in.
I think I was right first, Scott, as a duty to get together with the committee for the pool.
Yeah. Anyway, I'm glad that one worked out. Moving on to agenda item number 13, our city manager appointment, approval of city manager employment agreement, and creation of medical expense reimbursement agreement. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, tonight before you is an item that consists of three parts that will conclude what has been, I counted it, a five-month and three-day process, since Mr. Bielski had advised the council of his intent to retire at the end of this month. You've spent the last five months working through the process of attracting, interviewing, and now potentially retaining your next city manager. There are three actions before you. Two of them I'll ask you to do in a few minutes, which would be to appoint Scott Wolf as your next city manager and to approve his contract. Before that, though, we have what unfortunately is colloquially known as a MERP, but is a medical expense reimbursement plan. That's a plan, legal, legitimate, drafted by an expert in employee benefits, allowed under state law for public employees. And it's a plan under which employees are allowed to receive reimbursement for medical expenses above and beyond those available in the current plan. Mr. Wolf did ask that additional medical reimbursement be made available to him as part of his contract to somewhat equalize what he's receiving in his current, from his current employer. As I say, this is a plan that is drawn up by an expert, completely legal. Currently, Mr. Wolf, currently, I should say, the city manager would be the only person eligible for inclusion in the plan. At some later date, the council may want to consider extending the plan to other employees. That's not before you today, and I'll remind the council and the public at home that the council has taken several actions, actually, this spring, to retain and attract good employees. And this is just another action, again, at this time, extended out to just the potential new city manager, but it's a plan that would be in place if at some point in the future you, as a five-member body, felt it necessary to rely on this plan to, again, attract and retain high-quality employees. So with that said, I can answer questions about the medical expense reimbursement plan, or if not, I would ask if any member of the public wants to comment on the plan itself, that you let them comment, and that then we vote to create the plan, or to adopt the plan that's been written and put in front of you, and then after that, then we can move on to the appointment action.
All righty. Thank you. Any questions for our city attorney?
Can we just do that by consensus for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, without a motion?
Yeah, I need to open it up to the public. I don't have any speaker slips on this agenda item, but if anybody wants to get up and put in their two cents on our incoming city manager.
This is just on the plan first.
On the medical reimbursement plan. Medical expense reimbursement plan. I don't see anybody out there jumping out of their seats, bringing it back to council. Any comments or?
I think with consensus, we should approve it.
Okay. I'm with you on that.
I agree.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you, ma'am. Then now would be the time to appoint Scott Wolf as your new city manager, beginning on July 1, and to approve the city manager employment agreement in front of you. That plan does include, on page 8 of 13, the medical expense reimbursement plan that you just set up, and otherwise has terms that have been negotiated with Mr. Wolf. I can answer any questions, or you can open it up to the public, and I know that Mr. Wolf is here tonight, if you'd like to speak to him as well.
Terrific. First of all, any questions? Opening it up to the public regarding employment. Seeing nobody jumping out of their seats, bringing it back to the council. I appreciate that you are here tonight, Mr. Wolf. Gentlemen?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Linda?
Okay. All right. Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Drusick.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. We're looking forward to seeing you July 1, and congratulations. You are coming into one of the nicest, small cities I can think of.
Would you like to say?
Thoughts?
Don't make any pledges.
I'm accustomed, as I am, to public speaking.
No, I'd just like to say how honored I am to have this trust be placed in me, and how thrilled I am to have the opportunity to come and work for such a great place and to bring my family here. Like a member of our audience here, I too am coming from an area where this is a big change in lifestyle, and we're really looking forward to it. We're excited at the opportunity. We can't wait to get here, and I thank you all very much.
You're gonna, you're going, your kids are going to love our schools. Mr. Baker here is, you need any, any help after school? This is the man.
Boys and girls.
Yeah. You've got the school, high school here, I mean, you, yeah. You just can't go wrong here.
I am thrilled. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pam Nico did come a little bit late, so she said, leave one for Barbara tomorrow, but there is another tray of cookies, so our new city manager and anybody from the public, please come and eat, so I don't have to eat it all myself.
She's next to me.
Thank you very much. Well, I tell you, it's kind of bittersweet. We're losing Mark and getting Scott, and it's.
We have similar hairstyles, so.
Might get mixed up, might get confused. Okay. City managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a new employee starting on June 24th, a journey-level field worker, name of Juan Gomez, and we stole him from a local agency. He's very qualified for a position at the wastewater treatment plant. He has a lot of certificates, and I think he's going to do very well there. Rose, I know, can't stop smiling about, we're getting some quality staff in the public works to replace the long-term employees that we had there for doing the job, so. As you notice, there's lots of fire trucks running around. Fire season, obviously, has begun. There are little brush fires here and there around, so just be cognizant of that and work with the fire department and for brush clearing and all of that. Not as much in Buellton, but there is, you know, weeds and stuff that we need to take care of. And we are working towards an agreement with the post office for the back parking that will take care of all the issues. We'll have a lease agreement that Mr. Wolf will be bringing back, along with Rose, when they put the wording together.
In writing.
In writing.
In writing.
Absolutely.
Terrific. That's it? All righty. Mr. Murphy?
Your action under item 13 has eliminated the need for closed session tonight.
Ahah. No closed session? In that case, I adjourn this meeting. We'll see you all Thursday, June 27.
I'm going to get my flags.
You got time to get your flags?